Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Butte Silver Bow Council Commissioners Committee of the Whole Meeting, February 24th, 2016. Could I have a roll call, please?
Nine present, one presiding, two absent.
Thank you, Laura. Let the record show that Commissioners Palmer and Morgan are excused this evening. Would you join us in the prayer and pledge with Commissioner Henderson?
Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night as we make decisions which will greatly affect our community of Butte Silver Bow. Direct our thoughts, words, and deeds so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen.
(inaudible)
Dennis? So just a point of order for our audience. We have a public hearing and two presentations coming up, and then we ask for public comment on any item that is on the agenda, and that would, of course, include those items. And then at the end of the agenda is any comments on any item that's not on tonight's agenda. So just give you a preparation time to think about if you're planning on making comments. I am going to forego the report of the chair. We got kind of a full plate tonight, so I will jump right into Section 1. This is a public hearing. Communication number 16-51. Lori Casey, Assistant Planning Director, Butte Silver Bow Planning Board, requesting Council of Commissioners to conduct a public hearing on February 24th, 2016, on proposed changes to the urban area growth policy map. I assume that Mr. Sessow will be carrying on, and that the floor is yours. Oh, and do we have proof of purchase? Or proof of purchase? Proof of publication on the public hearing. Thank you.
Oh, Madam Chair, we do have proof of publication, and it does appear to be in order.
Thank you. John, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, my name is John Sessow, and I am the Planning Director for Butte Silver Bow. And as part of the proceedings tonight, this is a public hearing on a master plan amendment. The master plan or growth policy of Butte Silver Bow is to make certain changes in the master plan that affect Waukerville. I'm waiting for the little computer here to warm up, but I can show you. So about six months ago, the town of Waukerville approached Butte Silver Bow for the purposes of zoning the township. As you all know, Waukerville has been not a zoned area since its inception, and previous attempts to bring zoning into Waukerville have been unsuccessful. There's a change of heart or a leadership in Waukerville, and they approached Butte Silver Bow for the procedures and process necessary to bring zoning to the area. So the first thing we did was ask them what do they want to do. Right now, the entire township of Waukerville has a growth policy classification of residential. Okay? So in the past, they've been included in our growth policy classification system, and each time that we have proceeded with them, they wanted all of their land to be made residential. So now, they wanted a few different designations, some open space for the Alice Knob area, some open space for the Ryan Ball Field, some open spaces to the east side near the Granite Mountain Memorial, and they wanted to create a couple of pockets of commercial where the Blaine School is and essentially where Pissis Patterson and the Sherman School is. So when we looked at the growth policy, you get all residential, and if they ultimately want to change or zone the areas according to these designations, we had to first make changes in the growth policy. So as you can see here, the black line is the border of Waukerville. The yellow is the area that currently has a master plan or growth policy designation of residential. And so this area here is where the Ball Field is, and they want that to be zoned ultimately to open space development. And here, they want to have open space development, and here, they want open space conservation. Here, at the Blaine School, they want it ultimately to be zoned commercial. And basically where Daly and Main Street come together, they want a little pocket of commercial there, and then a little pocket of commercial at the bar and at the Sherman School because the current uses of those areas are commercial. So the proposal that went before the Planning Board was to change the growth policy. It's all got a growth policy designation of residential now, and they want those changes as I enumerated in the growth policy. And then the next step, should you approve the changes to the growth policy, they would come in with a zoning application for the entire area. These areas would have a zoning classification of R1. This would have open space conservation, as I indicated. And then most of the town area would have a zoning classification of duplexes, R2, two-family residential. So this is just sort of a sequence thing. This is the first step in their process to get the town zoned, and it requires these master plan changes to match up with the zoning classifications that they've researched. We've had the opportunity to have three meetings at the Waukerville Town Council. They went pretty well. They can report for themselves on the need and purpose for this change. And then we brought the proposal before the Planning Board, and the board voted unanimously to recommend approval to the governing body. So with that, Madam Chair, you can open up the public hearing.
Thank you. First of all, I would ask if any council members have any questions for staff regarding this plan that's before us? Commissioner Perdoo Dolan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, John. Is there any costs involved with these changes, and who would incur those costs?
Mr. Sessow?
Madam Chair, members of the council, Commissioner Perdoo Dolan, there is a fee to submit an application for a growth policy amendment, and then there's going to be a fee for the actual zoning of the township. Those fees will be paid by the township of Waukerville as far as the process, if that was your question.
Follow-up, Commissioner Perdoo Dolan.
Thanks. What are those fees? I'm just curious. I've just never seen those been in this process before.
You know, I think it's $250, but don't hold me to that. It could be 500. I don't know what it is. It was dutifully and willingly paid by the town of Waukerville for the growth policy change, and it really is a nominal fee to cover the advertising costs, to put the notice in the newspaper that we are making this change to our growth policy. And then same thing, we have some actual costs out of pocket to advertise these in the public forum. So it's either 250 or 500, Madam Chair. I apologize for not knowing exactly.
Thank you.
Okay.
You can ask the applicant, since they already paid it, they'll know.
All right. Well, thank you very much. So I'll open the public hearing. First call is for proponents. These are anybody that would like to speak in favor of the proposed changes. And if you'll just come to either microphone, give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kathy Jangula. My address is 149 West Daly in Waukerville. I have lived there for quite some time. I'm also a councilperson for Ward 1. We decided that we should look into zoning as we needed another tool to help us work with Butte Silver Bow to keep things kind of on an even keel. We want people to come to Waukerville to grow, but we want them to do it in a, for lack of a better word, a nice way rather than... For instance, at one point, we have a trailer that someone just plunked up there, and it's like a 1956, and it's all boarded up and just sitting there. And we would like to be able to prevent that sort of thing in the future. We would also like to have possibly some more small businesses in the area, like we used to have, like maybe a convenience store type thing. We did have three public meetings. We didn't have a great turnout at those. We didn't have adamant people against it. I have heard through the rumor mill, there's a few questions, but no one has been adamantly against it, so we decided to proceed. And as far as the fee, we were told it was $150, which we did pay right up front. Nice try, though, John.
It's a bargain now, right?
Nice try, John. So the council and the people that we have talked to so far were in favor of going forward with the zoning process.
Okay.
Any questions for me?
It's just a public comment. Thank you, Kathy. Appreciate that. Second call for proponents. Third and final call for opponents. Now I'll move to opponents. If there's anybody that would like to speak against the proposed changes. Second call for opponents. Third and final call for opponents. I will close the hearing. Thank you. Okay. Moving along to the next section. This is Section 2, a presentation, communication number 16-72. Stephen Burns, Woodstove Coordinator, Butte Silver Bow Environmental Health Department, requesting time on Council of Commissioners February 24th, 2016 meeting to update the council on the progress of the wood stove changeout program.
Thank you, Madam Chair, council. I'm going to be pretty brief, so just kind of do an overview of where we've come, where we're going, and where we've been so far. I've been here 11 months working thus far. The first 11 months, we've kind of figured out where we're getting our money from. Sarda approved us for two years for $125,000 each year. As of right now, of that money we've spent on the wood stove changeout program, we spent $44,897.15, and that is including 14 wood stoves being installed, full installs, which means disposal of old stove, install of new stove, piping, chimney out the top, everything of that nature. So that is a total install. We're in the Greeley area right now. Our area is from Texas to Shields to Grand to Continental. And we chose that area because after Kumar Ganeshan and Ward did a few tests, they determined that that's the lowest spot in Butte, and it's also where the highest percentage of what we figured were non-EPA wood stoves were burning. After we received our money, we developed the criteria for what we thought we were going to do so far. We're still kind of in the works. It's a new program, so the bugs are getting worked out right now. We've developed the criteria, starting an application process. We have each person apply, and then we go to their home. Me and Silver Bow Harthen Home, who's our sole vendor as of right now, and they will be because they're the only one in Butte. So we have them do our stoves for us. We go in, talk to the person, the resident of the home, and they approve... The only way they can get approved is if they agree to dispose of their old wood stove. If somebody wants to keep their stove for their garage or, you know, their cabin, it's kind of defeating the purpose why we're doing this. So they're not allowed. So if they decide that they want to keep their stove, they're no longer qualified for the program. Let's see here. We have met... When we first started, we met with the Greeley School Coalition, and our turnout was great down there. And when we first met with them was early October, and we had 10 people sign up. And in the month of October, we had four installs. November, we had three. December, we had three. And this month, we have three. And the month of March, we have three as well. And so in our future, we're looking to install at least 20 for the fiscal year. Depending, we want to do 24 for the year, but we're kind of running out of volunteers participation-wise. But since we were in the paper yesterday and in the news, my phone's been ringing off the hook. So we've had a few more people call and want to do the program, but we've also talked about expansion if we need to. I have probably six or seven people outside the area, maybe a block or two outside the area, that have contacted me and want new wood stoves. So if we have to, if we lose participation, we will go that route. And then the few things that we've seen so far, we've seen that we are the only major city in Montana that has not violated the 24-hour PM 2.5 standard. We don't know if that's because we have good weather, but scientifically, yet, we can't prove that, but we like to think it's part of the wood stove changeout program. In conclusion, we're above where we thought we were going to be. We thought we'd have six in. By this point, we have 14. We thought we'd be way, way higher budget-wise, and we're not. So the good news is if we keep going where we're going, we're going to be successful in the next year as well.
Thank you, Stephen. Any questions for Stephen, for the council? Commissioner Serge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Stephen, is there any place people can pick up flyers or pamphlets or anything? Where would they?
They can either contact me to pick them up or Silver Bow Harthen Home. They have done everything with us. They've been very, very good with us. So Silver Bow Harthen Home is usually where we try to stay outside the loop a little bit and let it be where Silver Bow Harthen Home handles it. So they'll contact me, then right after that, I'll contact Silver Bow Harthen Home and Silver Bow Harthen Home. We have most of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Perdoo Dolan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Stephen. I appreciate this program. I can't recall. I did read the article that was in the paper. Did you mention how you recycle the old stoves and how you tear them apart? And do you put them in the landfill? How does one... Because I know people are reticent to give them...
Give them away. Yeah, our process right now is Silver Bow Harthen Home takes them out, brings them to their place, and then when we get enough, when they get enough stacked up, so to speak, like, you know, 10, because then we send them to Pacific Steel, and Pacific Steel recycles them, and that goes back to the program. So we let all these people know that sooner or later, if they do do this, that somebody who needs one will get one because they helped us out. That's our plan. And we've had... Scrap metal's not very... You don't get much for it anymore. So I mean, when we got rid of our 11, I think it was $43 tops, so we got some work to do to get enough, but that's our plan. Every time that we get, you know, 10 or 11, we'll recycle, dispose them with Pacific Steel, and then the money will go back into the program.
Any other questions? Stephen, great report. Sounds like it's a win-win situation. I think people just still can't believe it's free.
Yeah.
It's kind of like our Addict Dust Program. It's like, it's really free. It doesn't cost anything.
Yep, we're doing well.
We're funded for two years, is it? I'm trying to remember.
Meet My Position or with Sarda, we're... Yeah, the My Position is program is funded for two years through MRI. And then Sarda allowed us 125 years for this fiscal year and next fiscal year.
125?
Yeah.
That's an offer.
Yep.
Great. Thank you. Anything else? Very well done.
Thank you.
We'll see you next time, huh?
Appreciate it.
All right. Great. So Section 3, Presentation, Communication Number 16-76. David Schultz, Director, Butte Silver Bow Public Works Department, requesting time on the February 24th agenda for the Council of Commissioners in order to update the Park Street, Excelsior Avenue, and Uptown ADA improvements. Nick?
Madam Chair, Julia will start us out and kind of go from there.
Madam Chair, Commissioners? My name is Julia Crane, and I work in the Planning Department. On behalf of my colleagues in the Planning Department and the Public Works Department, I'm here and very excited to share with you an update on the Park Street and Excelsior Street project. So just to give you a little bit of an overview here of kind of where we've been so that we know where we're going. In August of 2013, the Council of Commissioners authorized the designation of Park and Excelsior Street as the next priority project for urban route funding in our community. The 2005 transportation plan for Butte prioritized several projects throughout the community, and at this point in time, Park Street rose to the top of the list. If you recall that period of time, it was that very exciting moment when Northwestern Energy had first announced its $23 million investment at the corner of Park and Main Street, and several other initiatives and investments in the private sector were occurring along the corridor. Concurrent with that, Chief Executive Vincent was invited by the Mayor's Institute on City Design for the western part of the United States to join with mayors and chief executives from cities across the west to discuss the role of urban planning and urban design in the future of their city's development. Also, in the year 2014, which happened shortly after the November invitation to LA for MICD, the Planning Department submitted several applications, one of which was for a Transportation Alternatives program funding for ADA accessibility in Uptown Butte. The idea behind that, of course, providing inclusive access to the space, that is one of our gems. So in January of 2014, the state of Montana, Montana Department of Transportation, announced Park and Excelsior would be the next highway project. That following fall, MDT, as the owner of that road, hired Staley Engineering out of Helena as the contractor for the Park and Excelsior Street project. And I apologize for the error here. It was actually May of 2015. The Butte Local Development Corporation and its employees applied for acceptance into a conference that was being held by an organization called New Mobility West, a partner of the Sonoran Institute on Transportation Planning over in Bozeman. And Nick Sanford and I, several board members from the Bureau, from the BLDC, and members of Port of Montana and others attended that conference, and it was a really exciting opportunity for us to think about what was happening in our community. And I had brought to mind that the state of Montana had decided to make this investment in Park Street, and I thought, well, what better way to think about transportation projects that could be leveraged for our economic and community growth? And together, the eight of us worked over the course of three days to suss out this project that essentially leveraged what we had discussed in the year prior, or the year and a half prior, to create a better connection between our two jewels, the Uptown and Montana Tech, just at the other end of the Uptown District. So what we're looking at here is the project area for the Park Street portion of this project. We have right here the central business district, which you all know and recognize because we are right here right now. And then we have the campus of Montana Tech here at just the western edge of Park Street. And really, the core focus of this is this area between Montana Street and Western Avenue where the tech arch is located. The original project was intended to do simple mill fill between Montana Street and Excelsior Avenue, which is right here. And through this project, we extended the boundary of that to up to the archway at Montana Tech through several conversations that we had had with staff at Montana Tech and members of the community. So one of the really exciting things to come out of our participation in the conference with New Mobility West is sort of this question. How can upgrades to Park Street and Excelsior Street be leveraged to encourage connectivity between Montana Tech and Uptown Butte? This is an area where several thousand young people spend every day studying and learning about what they are learning about, and they're doing it in our community. And we noticed that we see less and less of their faces, and I think that that probably has to do with the rigor of the academics at Montana Tech, but also, we still want them to feel that they are a part of our community because there's that off chance in the future that they may fall in love and they may locate their business here and stay here forever. And so we convinced the grant, or I guess the conference attendees, that we were really excited about this, and we applied for $23,000 in technical assistance from New Mobility West. The BLDC submitted that application on behalf of the community, and they received the grant. And you know the next slide, Nick? In November of 2015, New Mobility West, the Sonoran Institute, BLDC, the Chamber of Commerce, and Butte Silver Bow banded together in a process called Elevate Park Street. And this was perhaps one of the most robust and one of the proudest public involvement processes that I have participated in in my time at Butte Silver Bow. There were four integral components to that public process. First of all, the consultants, Puma and Sonoran, did a survey. The survey was open from October 30th to November 10th. We received 359 responses to that survey. It was a survey that ranged in questions from where do you live, where do you work, all the way down to what makes you love Park Street and what are things that you don't like about Park Street? We followed that up with 16 individual focus groups comprised of local business owners, tourism and economic development professionals, Montana Tech students and professors, young professionals, neighborhood residents, realtors and appraisers. Members of the commission were invited and did participate in that. I know Commissioner Shaw was participating in that as well as Commissioner Palmer. We conducted individual interviews with members of the community who had a vested interest in the Park Street corridor, and then followed that up on November 4th. And you see the poster here, the Elevate Park Street poster, public workshop at the Park Street Baptist Church. We had 35 attendees in attendance at that. And then we've also had the series of articles in the Montana Standard, other media outlets in the community, as well as social media sharing. So some of the things that we found through this survey, and I would be happy to share the results of that survey with the Commissioners, there are both tabulated results and also the qualitative responses to that survey, which is where I pulled some of these facts from. Approximately 74% of people who responded traveled the Park Street corridor by vehicle, and 12% by foot, and then a range of different, I guess, modes of transit, biking or running or taxi. So there were other options or bus. And what a lot of people responded, they did their first response is what is my experience like as a driver? And then they responded, but I walk my dog from my neighborhood to the next. And so they also responded with their experience as a pedestrian. And I have to say, this is some of the most inspiring content that I've read about our community from our community. You know, people were very honest, and I think that they did that under the guise of the privacy of a survey, but also out of the pride that they have for their community. And some of the things that they talked about were some of the fears that they have. You know, people driving too fast. And one of the comments was that not only was it configured like a four-lane highway, but there wasn't enough traffic to slow people down, so the pedestrian felt scared because people were going 40 or 50 miles an hour down Park Street. Fears of crossing the street because it's so wide, and there are a lack of crosswalks, lack of lighting. And there was a lot of commentary on just kind of the look of disinvestment just due to either vacancy, poorly cared for lots that haven't been mowed, where there's garbage or weeds, or vacant and abandoned vehicles, which we often see there sometimes. So those were some of the things that people didn't talk about, and I would say that the positive about Park Street far outweighed the negative. I must have read 300 comments about historic buildings being the most amazing thing that they've seen while they walk. Cool old houses and those with trees, the views of the mountains, the archway at Tech, admiring the architecture, being able to spend time walking and taking advantage of what it is that they see in the space that's before them. They commented a lot about the local businesses like the Vu Villa and the Hummingbird, and also the party shop, which is kind of that anchor point for most of the Uptown District, and a lot of positive comments about the community garden and a desire for more green space rather than less. So some of the things that we did at the public workshop, this is actually a really cool charrette that we did. We took the entire length of Park Street from the archway right over here all the way over to Montana Street, and it was actually, if I drew it, it would probably be about seven feet long by three and a half feet wide. And what we did is we laid it on a table, and we invited the people who attended the charrette to come and comment with dots. You can see these green and yellow dots and red dots. I forget the land uses that were affixed to those. I apologize. It's back in November, but people were able to notate with Post-it notes what they would like to see along the corridor. And they were, by and large, very pro-fiber loop, looking for a speedier internet. A lot of the residents that live on the corridor were very interested in making sure that their parking was preserved if there were to be expanded commercial uses in the area. By and large, green spaces, more opportunities for getting food or shopping, like little letter shops where you could go and buy stationery. Also, another great idea was a tourist information kiosk that I thought was a pretty innovative idea where you could just get brochures or things like that right on a corner. About 80% of the respondents wanted more food available to them. I should mention, 60% of the respondents, about 60%, approximately 60%, were students or professors at Montana Tech. The next following most significant were residents in the district, and they noted that they wanted kind of light commercial opportunities at Park Street and Clark Street. You may know that as the pasty shop and then the Suds and You may know that as the pasty shop, and then the sudsy fun laundry. And then further down, closer to the, to the commercial area in Uptown Butte, was a broad mix of medical and professional food or professional services, like hairdressers or nail technicians, that type of thing. Finally, so we kind of got to see what people wanted, but we also got to assess their preferences. And right here, we have an example, these were large, three feet by two and a half feet posters where we posited different images about proposed designs that may, may be put into place with this project, and we asked specific questions based upon the image, and then asked people to declare their preference. And so you can see that a lot of people were very much in agreement, and a lot of people did say that they did disagree, but when they did, they provided the reason why. So we have a great amount of detail. So as you can see up here, some of the desired design elements are very, very consistent with our historic character, very large windows on the bottoms, the bottom floor, the main floor of buildings, pedestrian-scale street lighting. You'll see this historic lighting right here, that does constitute pedestrian-levels lighting. Street trees, other landscaping, pedestrian seating, sidewalks wide enough to accommodate trees and lighting, benches, bike racks, on-street parking was a big one. And then also, I thought was great, there's just the love that people had for the historic buildings, but seeing that sometimes, you know, in this day and age with the prices of gas, it may not be feasible to heat a giant mansion, but seeing, you know, the potential of reusing that for another purpose in the future. So that was quite revealing, and I do want to note that this report is currently under its final phase of development, and once it is completed, it will be provided to council. And the consultant who assisted us with this will come over from Bozeman and make a presentation to you about the overall report itself. So the primary New Mobility West recommendation was to design and build a walkable pedestrian-friendly street. This is based upon those focus groups, the individual interviews, and then the responses from the survey, saying that, you know, people want to be walking this corridor, people want to be spending time in our Uptown. So this was some, some methods or strategies that we could assume as a county, considering appropriate locations for crosswalks. You know, if you're on a particularly long stretch of Park Street, maybe there's a place for a mid-block crossing so you can get to the Vu and get a beer before you go get some dinner at the Hummingbird. Conduit for future fiber installation, speedy internet is a big demand, looking at potential for integrating both transit by bus, or maybe reinstituting a shuttle system between Montana Tech and Uptown. These curb variations, you may recognize this from other cities that you've been in, like sort of the bulbout where a lot of people put vegetation and planters or things like that. We have conceptualized that as a place where we could potentially have outdoor seating at some of the commercial locations along Park Street. That, of course, would be considered with the owner of the property to make sure that it's something that they would be willing to exchange a parking space for to accommodate the extended sidewalk. Again, pedestrian-scale lighting, and then the irrigated tree-lined medians were seen as a good solution to beautify and create the right character. And what I want to say about this is that, that we had considered doing street trees only on the peripheral, on the curb side, but that would have substantial implications on the way that the roadway would be designed for stormwater runoff, and so it had certain challenges. So we did opt to provide more green space via a median. And if you go to the next slide, we kind of get to the next phase of this, which is re-linking this New Mobility West project with, with the Park and Excelsior Street investment on behalf of Montana Department of Transportation. Following the New Mobility West workshop on November 5th, we brought the recommendations and the discussion items that we came, that we realized in the process to the Butte Transportation Coordinating Council on November 18th, and through that process, were able to begin working with them to integrate some of the things that we had heard through the public process into the scope of work development for the Park and Excelsior program, and make sure that we weren't, you know, going beyond what we were able to do within the realm of a mill and fill overlay. And then we have been, in the last several months, we have been working with them to ensure that the scheduling would be something that would be accommodated within the immediate timeframe and also in the long term. And with that, I would like to introduce Nick Sanford, our road engineer, who will be taking over to describe to you phases one through three for this project, which will be occurring on Park and Excelsior Street and up here in the Central Business District. Nick?
Laura's yours.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Julia. Like she said, I'm Nick Sanford with the Butte Silver Bow Road Department. And I'm going to talk about the three phases of this project, mostly construction, design, scheduling, and kind of where we're at right now. So Phase One, like Julia said, is the Uptown Central Business District, 88 alleyway crossings. So as you can see in this, in this photo right here, the alleyway, some of the alleyway crossings, actually, this is, this is a one that has been done previously, but some of the alleyway crossings in this Uptown Central Business District are not accommodating to ADA accessibility. They need ramps to actually have wheelchairs or any ADA accessibility to, to go down into the alley and then back up onto the sidewalk on the other side of the alley there. This one kind of accommodates, accommodates that. There's, I think there's about 15 or so locations in the Uptown Central Business District with this TA grant that's, it's going through MDT, and Staley Engineering's actually doing the design on it currently. It's slated for bid letting at the end of the construction season in 2016, and make it, it may get going for construction at the end of 2016, or it may spill over into spring of 2017. Phase Two would be the Park Street upgrades. So as Julia was explaining before, the extents of the project are from Montana Street up to Western Avenue. And one of the design features of this project includes narrowing or right-sizing the street from four lanes to two lanes in each direction. There has been traffic counts done in the past that currently meet the needs of a two-lane, two-way, two lanes in each direction, or one lane in each direction. And they, they don't accommodate a four-lane traffic section there. The design and the, the construction median allows for landscaping, left-turn lanes at pertinent intersections, and it's, it should be an aesthetically pleasing center median. So the, the project also includes 88 corners. So what you, you can see on some of the corners, there are ADA ramps, truncated domes. They'll be done on all the corners, all the intersections on each block. Some of the sidewalks are in disrepair, so there's a sidewalk inventory that was done by Staley Engineering. They, they came back and told us what sidewalks need to be redone and upgraded, and that will be included in the project as well. Some of the side, I guess, the curb cuts will accommodate tree, tree cuts in the sidewalk as well. So this, this project is currently in design. It should be bid for, out to, out to bid in 2017 with construction occurring in either 2017 or spring of 2018. So this is a schematic of kind of what's, what's going to be happening on Park Street. Right now, we don't have any, Staley Engineering doesn't have too many design concepts going right now, but this is just one concept that we've, that we've gotten from different, different sources. You can see here, the center median landscaped, some bulbouts here, one lane in each direction, and I forgot to mention a bike lane. There'll also be park, parallel parking, about a nine to 10-foot parallel parking width there to accommodate parking as well. One, and I know you, you've probably read it in the paper, but one, once, one, I guess, idea that came to, came to us in MDT and Staley was the, the section in Boulder Streets, or, sorry, not Boulder Street, but, but Boulder, Montana, their, their main street has accommodated this center median. Ours would look a little different than this, but here's an idea of what, what it looks like in real life in Boulder, so. Phase Three of the project, of the urban fund, urban funded project is Excelsior Street. So it goes from Platinum to Ryan Road, which is, you know, close to two miles of a mill and fill project, and that's just straight mill and fill, there's not going to be a center median, Excel couldn't accommodate that. But it will include 88 corners, alley crossings to accommodate ADA, sidewalk repair and replacements where necessary, according to the Staley, the, the Staley inventory. There was some requests from Butte Silver Bow to add some tree wells in a variety of locations, mostly south of Park Street. And there's, there are potential for boulevard enhancements along that, along that stretch as well. So along south, south Excelsior, there is a, proposed to shift over the center lane a few feet to the west. This, this would take away parking on the west side, but it would accommodate parking here on the east side. And I'm sure all of you have driven Excelsior where people park up and down the boulevards on both sides of the street, mostly on this west side, or on this east side here. So we'd like to accommodate, accommodate parking over here. On this east side, there are side, side parking with, with angled parking over there, so we're hoping, and we're going to go door-to-door to each of these residences and, and property owners to see if, see if that will accommodate them as well, so. So any questions, but there's a, I'm not sure if this video will work, but, you know, it was a, kind of a fun little video that showed pole car races up and down Park Street back, kind of back in the days.
Thanks, Nick, thanks, Julia. At this point, I would open up for questions for the staff. Commissioner Sorich?
Thank you, Madam Chair. God, I'm always, it looks like an exciting project, and I'm always in favor of anything we can do to improve Park Street, but like, I think Commissioner Anderson or Mr. Schles always says, that the devil's in the details. So one of my concerns is what about snow removal? You know, what, how would you do snow removal on that area if you've got a center median?
Nick?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Sorich, thanks. Yeah, that's definitely a consideration that we're going to have to, I guess, a challenge we're going to have to take into consideration. One proposed aspect would be to work with the property owners to remove cars from the street. We might have to shut down the street, put the, put the snow in the center there, and then pick up as we go, as, you know, as we usually do on Park Street, but it'd have to be on both sides of the median. We definitely have to work with, work with the business owners, with property owners along that stretch. We also have 11-foot driving lane, a five-foot bike lane, and a nine-to-10-foot parking lane, which would help accommodate some of that, it, it's fairly wide there, so it would help accommodate some of that snow removal as well. Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, it was a great presentation. As I often state, I'm just the messenger, and when this came to light in the newspaper today, I received a few calls, and I don't know whether it's from lack of, you know, this being out to the public, because I see there we had plenty, plenty of hearings and things like that, but there's only 359 responses, and 35 people only attended the Baptist Church. That's a really small amount. I received three calls today from people that used to live on Park Street, that still live on Park Street, and they're very concerned about this new development. They don't feel that the center median's a good idea, they've got some other issues and concerns, and it seems that a lot of this has taken place, and I for one didn't hear a lot about it until just two, three weeks ago, so it's just a comment. I would hope that there is a little more public input prior to complete design. Thank you.
Chairman Shaw? Commissioner Fisher? We did our best to make sure that as much information was available to the public, and as you saw, we've been kind of talking about this since 2013, and I fully understand where you're coming from. One of the good things about being here today, and because we are at such an early stage in really accomplishing this process, is that once the consultant has actual designs put together that are created, that use Park Street and not renderings from a book that is best practice for the industry, will allow us to both talk to residents that live in the neighborhoods with actual design examples of their neighborhood, and invite them to additional public processes to participate in that conversation. We always struggle with trying to get the word out as best we can, but we are trying to use multiple channels, newspaper, radio, TV, as well as social media, on Facebook.
Thank you. And I have a question and a comment, and the question is, could somebody just explain to this body and to the audience what the CTEP grant is? I know we've had them in the past, and what, what combination of funds is involved? Do we have a matching amount, or, you know, just to basically how the funding would work up for this program? John, would you care to answer that?
Madam Chair, members of the council, first of all, there's, there's no CTEP money in this particular project, but the, the acronym stands for Community Transportation Enhancement Program. As you know, it's sunsetted in 2013. The last four Butte projects are actually out to bid, and we're going to be opening bids next Wednesday for the, what we call sidewalks two, for 16 or 17 locations in and around town and near schools. We also have an at-grade crossing to replace the bridge that we wanted to build over Montana Street, but we're going to do an at-grade crossing at Montana and Front. We also have a landscaping project that is at the entrance at Utah and, and Front, and some trees, more trees that could be installed, and then establishing the downtown bike lanes that were talked about last year. The CTEP program has sunsetted, it's been replaced by the Transportation Alternatives Program, TAP, and that is Phase One that Nick mentioned, that'll take care of those areas in the Uptown District where we have good corners at the intersections, but we have bad handicapped access at the alleys, mid-block. So there's, as he said, 16 locations that will get done under this grant, and any additional dollars will be used on Park Street to improve the handicapped accessibility, and then that'll blend into the urban project. As Chief Executive Vincent mentioned last week, we also were awarded a second Transportation Alternatives Program project in the second year. We have to thank our colleague Lori Casey, who bird-dogged those grants and, and got them through the, they're, they're now competitive. The CTEP program used to be a earmarked program for each community based on your population. Now you have to compete for Transportation Alternatives Program money, and we've been fortunate enough to get two-for-two in the first two years of the program. This is a, the, the majority of the work on, on Park Street and Excelsior Street will be done with what was called the urban route money, urban system funding. Butte Silver Bow gets approximately $700,000 a year in urban system funding. We have been compiling our account for the better part of the last six years so that we have enough money to pay for the Park and Excelsior project. It was, as you saw in the video, in the, in the slideshow, it was, it was made the urban priority by your decision in 2013, and now it's finally reached the front of the queue with the completion of the project on Hanson Road by the Y, and that urban system project. We've al, we've also completed Amherst, Grand, Montana, and Maine and Utah over the course of the last several years, and now it's time for Park Street and Excel using urban system funds that are earmarked to communities by population, by urban system miles, and they're administered, the federal funds administered by the state of Montana.
Okay, thank you, John. And the other comment I was going to make is, North Excel is in my district, and really since 2013, when they did have CTEP money, and Lori put out for project requests, and one of mine was for sidewalk improvements, curb and gutter. I had pictures of areas that there's just, there was sidewalk and then there's nothing, especially going around towards the schools. It's been on my plate for three years now, and then I'm looking toward another three years to wait to have those improvements done. And I'll be honest, you know, I'm very disappointed that the Excelsior portion of the project is not going to be completed before the Park Street. To me, that's more of an aesthetic, the Park Street plan to me is more of aesthetics, sort of an island of beauty, but I'm talking about the North Excelsior area is extremely bad. Talk about ADA problems, talk about alleys, all sorts of drainage issues, stormwater issues, no sidewalks for kids to walk on to go to school. And so I'm just saying on the record that I am disappointed that the Excelsior portion has been moved up to be the last item on this list. I think it should be at least the second, and I just needed to say that on the record for my constituents. So Commissioner Fisher?
I mean, Uptown Butte seems to be getting the lion's share of most of this money coming in, and I'd like to see a little bit of it spent south of Front Street, and a little bit spent south of, uh, Holmes Avenue. There isn't a curb or sidewalk south of Holmes Avenue anywhere, and when you go before the zoning or planning board, and they tell one person in the whole neighborhood that he has to have a curb and sidewalk, it's kind of frustrating. Thank you.
Any further questions? Commissioner Foley.
Thank you. I guess more or less comment, I appreciate the presentation, and I would concur partly with Commissioner Shaw in terms of Excel, it is in rough shape, but if you drive down Park Street, it is also in rough shape, both of them. Probably most streets in Butte are in rough shape. So this ongoing, you know, where we should be spending money, you have to understand the destination of where this money should, where it's going. So all due respect to Commissioner Fisher, there are other means, and we can, as a council, we can address those, so. But overall, I want to commend you on this project, because I think the thing is, is sometimes we always have naysayers, we've read it in the paper, but anything that is a positive influence, appearance, improving appearances in this community is a very good thing. If there is one shining model in this community is Montana Tech, and the more we collaborate and, and enhance that to that campus, and they're doing lots of improvements up there as well, it's an extremely positive thing. The amount of money that's poured into this community through tech, and as you see, the comments, a lot of tech students and professors and so on, you can go to any university in the country, whether, you know, the big city or small city, they cater and they, they work closely with them, and so I commend you for doing that. I think it's a positive thing. I think the small things that, that, you know, that we may have out there about snow removal, I mean, we can work around those things. The more progress we can make in trying to, as I said, to improve this community is, is needed, and I commend you, and thank you for your hard work, and I look forward to seeing that in the near future.
Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you very much, Chairman Shaw. I'd like to thank you for your work on this and for the presentation. I remember talking to Mr. Sessow a couple years ago, and I said what I'd really like to see, and then he showed me some of the projects that they were working on, including this Park Street and Excelsior, and I was just incredibly happy to see it. I think anytime we can do small things like this, and this is a great big thing, but when you look at it overall, it is a rather small thing, I think it will be an inconvenience for some, especially those who want to speed up and down Park Street a hundred miles an hour, but I think it'll be a benefit to a lot more. I live in this district, I see kids walking up and down the streets. I walked up and down the sidewalks, back and forth to Tech for many a year, and they are in bad shape. I walked the streets and all over town, and a lot of them are in bad shape, but this is a very thoroughly used corridor, especially with Montana Tech. I think that allowing and giving the students a better way to get in and out of our uptown is only beneficial to the entire community. When you look on average per year, Montana Tech students spend roughly $100 million in our community, that's a tremendous amount of money, and anything we can do to increase that partnership with the school, especially as they try to expand, I think also helps. It also brings in more money to further projects elsewhere in town, even below Front Street and around Dewey Boulevard. So thank you very much for your hard work, thank you for your diligence. There is quite a few questions left to be answered, I'm sure, but with your record of getting things accomplished, I have the utmost faith that these will be overcome relatively easily. So again, thank you.
And I want to also thank you for all your work. I did go to all the public hearings and the forums, and they were very interesting. It got people excited about talking about change and things they might like to see. Could you just tell this body what the next step is? I think you said that the, the group would be coming to visit with us and maybe give us a...
Chairman Shaw, my colleagues and I, the Butte Local Development Corporation, Mary McCormick, Dory Screwcrew, myself, Pam Haxby-Cody and her colleague Andy Zadinek, will be working with the consultants in the next couple of weeks to actually finalize that document. We have our final draft that we're putting our final comments on right now. We are going to invite John Levy from New Mobility West, or Community Builders now, to come over and chat with us. He is out on paternity leave at the moment, so we're going to let him have some time with his new baby, and then have him come and chat with all of us. Following that, there are ongoing conversations with the Montana Department of Transportation. I anticipate the next step in that to be an alignment and grade review of the project, and as the process proceeds, we will be more than happy to come to you, to chat with you about what's going on there, and then also keep you apprised of our interactions with the neighbors in both the Excelsior, I guess, the lower and upper west side and Park Street.
Cindy Perdue-Dolan and then Commissioner Henderson. Sorry, she had her hand...
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I just wanted to echo what Commissioner Fisher said when this was in the paper. I received several calls from my constituents, and they had asked me if I was aware of the project. I said, yes, vaguely, and that is on me, but also, I, I feel like we are sometimes, and most times, left in the dark about a lot of things that are in the works, and I wish that we were more involved in the process, so we could keep constituents who are not uptown in, in the loop and have questions about, and Commissioner Sorich had my question about snow removal in this median, and, and I thank you for your presentations, but I do have concerns about the, the way it was presented in the almost, the matter of fact, the, the, this is how it's going to be in the, the detailed manner of timeframe, and the fact that four lanes to two lanes and angled parking, and a lot of questions that my constituents have over things that have already been, that they're dealing with currently, and that we're adding on more, that, and change is difficult, and I understand that, but if we're going to two lanes, is that going to eliminate speeding cars or crosswalks for people to cross the street on Park Street? Is it aesthetics versus dealing with drainage issues, as Commissioner Shaw alluded to? So while the Department of Transportation may be footing the, the large bill, these are the questions that my constituents have raised, and that I wanted to be on the record and raise them as well. Aesthetically, this is a beautiful project, and while I applaud it, I wanted to get these questions on the record, and wonder too, if the Dewey Boulevards and the other streets that do need attention, I'll bet Continental Avenue is filling potholes today, so I was excited about that. But I did want to get these questions on the record, so you can put them in your mind as well as we move forward, so thank you.
Commissioner Henderson?
Oh, I'm sorry, did you, did you want to... Commissioner Shaw, Chairman Shaw, Commissioner Perdue-Dolan, the alignment and grade review for the process for the design of Park Street and Excelsior Street is currently at 30%, and that is when we kind of get to start talking about some of the issues that you have raised. What are the current traffic warrants on Park Street? What are the parking requirements? Nick could of course go into more detail on that because he, because he is an engineer, but those are questions that we want to know, so that we can become, come to you prepared to respond to those types of questions, so thank you for providing those. I appreciate that very much.
Commissioner Henderson, or Commissioner...
Madam Chair, a few years ago, we were put on a study committee for, several of us for roadwork and road funding, and where we were going to get it, and what streets we were going to do, and, and we were short of money and couldn't get things done, and somehow it dispersed the, all the work we'd done, but more so than that was, Butte Silver Bowl paid 50-some thousand for a study from Pessie Associates out of Helena, who won the bid on that, and they came in with the study that told about the streets that should be getting done in Butte, and listed them in categories. And I don't recommend, I don't recollect that Park Street up by Tech was even in the top 10, and so I, I'm just a little confused on, on how we, is that designated by somebody that, this, this, these monies? I mean, were they ever thinking about the other roads in Butte that, that are more necessity?
Mr. Sessow, would you care to answer?
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioner Henderson, the study that was commissioned for Pechia was to study all of the local streets that were not on the MDT system. We have to understand a couple things. There are four systems within the federal-state highway designations. There is the, of course, the interstate, and then there's what they call the primary route, and in, in Butte, the primary route is Harrison Avenue to George, to Park, over Park, to Montana, and then out Iron. And then there's the urban system, which is the subject of the Park and Excelsior project, and then there's the secondary routes. Two, there's only two secondary routes left in Butte, Butte Silver Bowl, one is the road to Fairmont from the interstate, and the other is Brown Gulch up north. As far as the urban system, there are approximately 14 urban routes on the Butte system. They're designated by mile and, and number. All of those routes that I just mentioned were excluded from the Pechia study, because there are a funding source separate from what would be a local source to take care of. So the ranking system that Pechia used was for all the streets that were not on the urban system, and as I, as I, as I mentioned, on the urban system is Holmes and Row Road, Montana, Lower Montana Street, the Amherst, all the major arterials, Amherst, and, and, and...
Grand. Continental.
The one Texas in...
Park and Excel, Grand.
Continental.
Well, Continental is, by the way, Continental is up for a, a mill fill, a project this year, from the interstate all the way to the Nine Mile, so that will be done under a maintenance project this year. I was thinking Grand Avenue. Grand Avenue's part of the urban system, Amherst, and Dewey. We had to make, we had to get Dewey on the system, and we have a little yin yang thing with Dewey going on, because we have to put about a million dollars in a water improvement onto Dewey before we want to put the new roadway on, on top of it, so there's a sequence problem, problem there. But all of the, the roadways that can and do get underrecycled, get improved with federal slash state funds, were excluded from the Pechia, so that's why you did not see either Excelsior Street or Park Street, but I, I think that we've heard certainly testimony from all of you and, and many of our citizens that those two roadways are in dire need of, of improvement. So that's the way the system works. The, the urban system dollars coming down from the federal government are used for the urban routes in Butte. There is another pot for the interstate, there's another pot for the primary route, and that's what led to both North Harrison Avenue and Front Street getting done in, in the last, you know, in 2010, 2011, and then using some special monies through the Resource Re, America Recovery Act, we were able to get enough funds for Main Street, and then we were able to do Utah Street, which is part of the primary system under a, a maintenance agreement with, with the MDT. So we do our best to use the funding sources for the different designated routes. This is an urban system route, and that's why we're doing it. And I, I would just add one more thing with respect to the comments about uptown, downtown. You know, you did just commission that we move forward with the update to our transportation plan. That's where really you set the table for what the priorities are going to be over the next 10 years. The last time we did it was in 2005, now we're doing it again. It's just getting off the ground by our consultants. They had their first steering committee meeting last Friday at the Archives. I would encourage any of you who have the time and, you know, inclination to join us on the steering committee and direct that transportation update, because it, after all the studying is done, and they do the warrants, and they do the traffic counts, they then set in a table what our priorities should be for maintenance, urban system, the primary system, and local roads over the next 10 years, and that's where you can really have some input on which roads should be done next, and the one after that. Madam Chair.
Follow-up.
Follow-up, Commissioner Henderson.
I've got a couple follow-ups, Madam Chair. Number one, John, then, maybe I'm a little confused, because Main Street was one of them that Pessie and them had mentioned in that report, and also Montana Street that Pessie had down, I think it's called Pessie or...
Pechia.
Pechia, okay. They were down on South Montana Street, and that's when we started up there and then, you know, with the, up to Iron there, and so that, that was in the report also. So was Dewey, so was some other streets, but that's, I, I don't quite distinguish between the urban route and, and, I mean, wasn't Main Street urban route?
Madam Chair, yes, it was. What I was saying, you, you mentioned in your point that there were categories in the report, and you were dead right. The category, what, what they did in the report was they, they ranked the urban routes, but did not count those towards what, what local taxpayers would have to fund to get improved, is what I was trying to communicate, maybe didn't do a good job. So they had the urban routes, including Maine and South Montana. They had the primary routes, but then they said, don't spend the local dollars on those routes, because eventually they'll get done with the federal-state dollars. That's what I meant to communicate, Mr. Henderson.
Thank you, follow-up.
Commissioner Henderson.
I would have to ask Public Works this then, this, would this job be any part of the city doing any part of this job?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Henderson, no, the Department of Public Works wouldn't have any involvement in this.
This would all be contracted out, the whole thing?
Just wanted to contract it out, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, well?
Thank you. I just want to thank you for all the hard work you've done. I know that it's been mentioned tonight that 359 people isn't a lot of people, and it's not, but it's a lot more than usually respond, and you have to work your butt off to get 359 responses, so thank you for that. I also wanted to mention that there have been a lot of communication with council. We've gotten emails every time there was a, a, a public hea, not a hearing, but a workshop. There you go, a public workshop, or, or that when the surveys came out, sometimes I got more than one email, and even tonight, it's, this isn't a required presentation. This came about last, a couple of weeks ago, Dave Schultz was talking to a few of us and realized that some of the commissioners still didn't know what was going on, and so he did, he requested this meeting just to inform us of what was going on. It's not something that has to be done, it's not something that we have to vote on, we're not going to vote on this. It's just for our information, and I hate to see people pwned for doing something above and beyond. This is an extra thing, and it deserves credit, not, not being slammed.
Thank you. And I know that you folks are ready and able to answer our questions, and we really appreciate your being here to do that. Commissioner Henderson.
I just add one more question, Madam Chair. This is kind of confusing, but in Public Works, we had a problem just a few weeks ago with putting, we want to put stop signs, we want to put crosswalks, we want to put some other things, we want the police to patrol up on, I believe it was ML Western, wherever, because when Tech kids get out, they're flying. So this is kind of confusing to me, because you want to narrow it down to one lane going each way, it's two now. Isn't that even asking more problems? Has that ever been considered by DOT or anybody?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Henderson, typically when you reduce the lane from four to two lanes, traffic slows down, it, it seems to slow down, especially on, on Front Street. You've noticed people, that, that went from a four lane to a two lane, seemed like people slowed down on that. And, and as far as pedestrian traffic, you only, for crosswalks, you only have to cross two lanes of traffic with a center lane refuge, then crossing four lanes, that's a lot, lot tougher to cross as a pedestrian as well, so. In, in my experience, it seems like right sizing it down from four lanes to two lanes is safer for pedestrians and motorists as well.
Madam Chair, I would add too, that the, the...
So, um, in, in my experience, um, it seems like, uh, right sizing it down from four lanes to two lanes i- is safer for pedestrians and motorists as well.
Madam Chair, I would add too that the, the warrants are still not done. I mean, the, the, um, before we can, because, because remember now, this is a, a state-run thoroughfare, even though our, our department maintains it. The first, one of the first couple of steps in a change like this is that they got to get the traffic counts and they got to do a warrant, uh, a, a determination on whether the amount of traffic can flow through the, the roadway facility with the same service, they call it. They rank these things by service, how long you'd have to stop at the light, how, how long you'd have to stop and, and, and wait to turn left or what have you. So they're, they're, they're collecting the data now, they're analyzing it, and then they are going to come up with a, a warrant to determine whether going from four lanes to two lanes can be accommodated. And based on the early returns of that study, the amount of traffic that, that is measured o- every day, every season, et cetera, it appears that the, the roadway can, uh, function at, at the service level that i- that, that we want, uh, w- with the two lanes. Then with the, with the left turn bays that are planned, uh, at the intersections, particularly at Clark, at Alabama, and Excelsior, and Emmett, uh, you know, it looks like that we're going to be able to have enough stacking space in the left turn bays so that the main, uh, uh, lane for traffic will not be interrupted by, by left turners. So that's the, that's why it's taken so darn long to get this project out of design and onto the ground. Uh, but those are the studies that are being done. As, as that data comes to us, we'll be able to report more specifically on what the impacts of, of going down from four to two will be, and whether in the professional judgment of these, uh, these, uh, these qualified engineers, uh, whether the roadway can accommodate it based on the traffic today, and then based on the data we're collecting under the transportation plan out 10 years, whether with growth it will be able to accommodate over a 10-year period. Madam Chair.
Okay. Follow-up, Commissioner Henderson.
Madam Chair, um, John, thank you, uh, but I, you know, I know on, um, the Public Works meetings we have, and I know what Mr. Foley went through over there on Excelsior and Platinum with the DOT. It took a year and a half or two fighting just to try to get the stoplight there because it was so dangerous with the kids. So we know how long that takes, and I would think that this study here is going to really take a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Well, thanks again for the presentation, and we look forward to hearing from you in the future on the next stage. So, okay. Now we're at the point in our, uh, agenda tonight, uh, calling for any public comment on any items that were on tonight's agenda. And if you have a comment, sir, just come on up to the,
Okay.
Please identify yourself and your address for the record. Thanks.
Chairwoman Commissioners, my name's Dan O'Neill. Uh, I'm a proponent, and I had a prepared speech, but I just wanted to add, prior to seeing, uh, Nick and Julia's proposal, that I also wasn't aware of that planning session or some of what I might say is, uh, would, may have been a little bit more relevant to that. Um, and then also, I did sign up for the city's email notice for when there's projects out, and John had said there's four projects currently out, and I haven't gotten any email because obviously two of those I was, would be interested in. Um, so then third, uh, is, I'll, I'll just enter into this. And my background on what I have to say about this Park Street is, having been in the landscaping industry for 18 years, I've, I've bid these projects, and we've had maintenance contracts to do City of Missoula, uh, tree maintenance. After they did the malfunction junction reconstruction, um, I bid and reviewed the, uh, Billings Heights when they, they, uh, changed the entrance to the airport. So I've tracked these projects in Montana and specifically some of the roundabouts. I went to New Zealand in 2002 and came back and was all excited about roundabouts. We got to have roundabouts here. And then, you know, in a lot of cases, they're great, and in some cases, they're not. So that's, that's what I wanted to just enter before I read this, what I had prepared. So I'm here tonight to strongly encourage you to preview, preview the design plan and support improvements to Park Street. Most urban and suburban areas in the state, Pacific Northwest, Northwest, and United States in general have benefited from streetscaping and corridor improvements over the past 30 years, and I believe it's time for Butte to enter into the 21st century. Uh, the possibility of improving the image of our city makes me smile. Certainly residents and commissioners' support of a civic improvement project such as this would be a big improvement to the image, or an improvement the image Butte residents and others have of our outdoor living space. It is obviously not going to increase the salaries at tech or make students any smarter, but they may be richer in spirit because of it. My past experience speaking with folks at landscaping industry-related events is of embarrassment and ridicule for the obvious lack of attention Butte pays towards its outdoor living space. There is not much of a historical precedent set for landscaping, urban forestry, streetscapes, or any form of outdoor improvement except for the Columbia Gardens. The mining past, poor air quality, and general lack of consideration by Butte residents towards outdoor living is something we can leave in the past and not bring into the future. As this plan progresses, I would encourage the commissioners to ask tough questions so that this project doesn't become the next Harrison Avenue, an urban improvement disaster that was once a hopeful project. Park improvements will last for the next 50 to 100 years. Take it upon yourself to do the research and review the plans set forth by the state such as the 2005 transportation plan that, you know, I was reviewing as part of the planning board when they were talking about the improvements to Harrison Avenue. And it's really unfortunate that the, the, the construction standards that we were left with, and I wouldn't really call what's there landscaping, but, you know, that really wasn't followed, so as we're preparing this next plan, hopefully you guys actually get a copy of this and review it rather than ask the questions, because this is where the information is right here. And it doesn't take a genius. You don't need a, you know, an engineering degree to understand what's in here. And in fact, I attribute a lot of the problems to some of the, some of these state projects, to the engineers that don't have a landscaping or soils background. So they do the design that a landscape architect or a landscape designer should do, such as in Boulder, such as in Whitehall, and then it's a disaster. Anyways, if we are receiving negative input from residents about the possibility of a boulevard, then ask the design team to turn it into an avenue with grass and, grass and trees between the street and the sidewalk. Imagine that. Butte, Montana is Park Avenue. Another idea that a commissioner might ask to consider would be to close all the intersections of the streets between Washington and Montana Tech, except the intersections of Clark, Emmett, and Excelsior. If utilities allow, those areas could be turned into parks, off-street parking, or be sold as building lots, such as that alleyway that was considered where it might be too narrow to, you know, use, be used as an alley, but if, if we could remove that and maybe someone would want to build a building there, it's a, a community garden. I've not participated in my industry trade association for approximately six years. It would be nice if I ever choose to go to a convention or trade show again to be able to have a project in Butte worthy of applause rather than embarrassment. Maybe after 18 years of disappointment, this could be something to be proud of.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Do you have any other further comment on anything on tonight's agenda, sir? Do identify yourself for the record, please.
I'm sorry?
Would you just identify yourself for the record? Thanks.
It's, uh, Terry Spath, 431 West Mercury. I live about 500 feet south of the proposed Park Street improvements. And in my job, I, I travel a lot around the, the Western US mostly and various cities and towns. Sunday I was in Eugene and Portland both. And those towns are doing very well. They're, uh, young people flock to them. Uh, some of you may be familiar with the, uh, Creative Class book by the author, Richard Florida. Those towns are on the vanguard of getting the creative class to come to their towns. In communities like Eugene, the car in the core city is no longer the center, center of life. Uh, young people, they eschewed, uh, car ownership and in place, use Uber, walking, bike-sharing programs, and, uh, it's a little different than when I was a kid, and all I could think about was getting a car or motorcycle, but it's 50 years ago. Uh, the Park Street vision that I see really conforms to this new paradigm, paradigm, and I really support it. What kind of, um, motivated me to come tonight, I saw the, I, I, and I've been kind of aware of this, so there's been quite a bit of, uh, uh, information out there about it, but I saw the opinion article in the, um, Standard, and then I read the letter, some of the letters and, uh, disputing, uh, what our presenters, uh, presented here. And, uh, I suspect the author and some of the letter writers won't be around in 50 years, and neither will I, but I think it's pretty significant that the people that are presenting this probably will be. Julie and Nick, they're going to be here. And the, uh, improvements that they're talking about are all still, still going to be here, and these improvements are going to be leading, I think, to, uh, uh, what's been identified tech as a jewel in our town, and a nice boulevard going up there to attractive and vibrant campus will just really add to our, our, our city. Uh, 30 more seconds more, I'd like to say, by the way, I want to commend the Butte Silver Bow on the good job they do of keeping Butte's walking trails clear during the winter. I was on it as recently as four hours ago, and I see many other residents out year-round enjoying our, uh, healthy, outdoor, brisk, and invigorating climate. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Terry. Any other comment?
Hi. Mark Reviss, 842 West Galena, Chairman Shaw and Commissioners. I'm all for acknowledging the importance of Montana Tech and that some street improvements should indicate according to the campus. I was directly involved with the placement of the tech arch designed by Pete Gottlin and funded by Bob Poor. It's an important community feature. I support reasonable enhancements along Park Street from Montana Street to the bottom of the tech hill. Improvements primarily for pedestrian safety. Pedestrian bumpouts likely designed for the trail crossing at the tech arch. I'm adequately opposed to reducing the remainder of Park Street to two lanes and putting in a central landscape median. This is an important and efficient primary corridor. I am also imposed to the inclusion of bike lanes. Bike lanes should be directed to adjacent streets of Broadway and Galena. I would be pleased to have slower traffic where I live on Galena Street with reduced speed limits, a route where children play in the street, and cheroes can be placed for bikes. All the concepts shown in the computer-generated drawing should only be imposed on the tech campus. Unfortunately, that's not being considered. So from Marcus Daly statue to the west, slow traffic, pedestrian crossings, central medians, parklets, all those things would be great at the tech campus itself, but not on the primarily efficient corridor where snore removal is essential. Pedestrian bumpouts with handicap access, granite cobblestone edging, historic-style street lighting with tech logo, banner hangers, those would be all nice things to identify the corridor, but keep it four lanes. On to the street that should be our priority that's being pushed back on schedule, the perfect street to be tree-lined that is in desperate need of repaving is Excelsior. I do agree with the analysis from Park Street South that we can eliminate parking on the west side, plant more trees into the existing boulevards while accommodating several businesses and assigning residential parking to the western side of the streets. Now that would be good money spent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
My name's Aaron Ralph. I didn't bring anything to write on, but I oppose to this. I think that council's main objection to fix the streets in Butte, not just pretty up one. That's my comment.
Thank you, Aaron. Appreciate that.
I'm John Weitzel. I reside at 815 Seventh Street in Butte, Montana. I'm owner-operator of Weitzel Signs, and I'm also on the Historical Preservation Committee. I come here tonight because I, a while back, I talked to you folks about the, the trucks in Butte. And one of the things I would like to propose is to have an, an, a citizen advisory group that would comprise of professional truck drivers to go ahead and look at these proposals before they, before they come to the board. I understand that a lot of people here do not drive big trucks, and they don't understand the turning radius on these trucks and how difficult it is to get around town. And like I've often said, the, the, the more you make the, the streets in Butte more comparable for the big trucks to get around, the more the traffic will flow. Uh, the other thing that I have a real problem about this, there's nothing historical about putting trees down the middle of Park Street. That's said and done. Uh, one of the other things I would also like to, uh, point out is that we were told that if you put Park, if you put bike lanes in uptown Butte, it was going to enhance the economics of Butte. I can tell you from firsthand that my signs that I put up in Butte attract more business to Butte than the bike lanes do. And I would like to ask each and everybody that's in this room tonight, how many of you people have ever rode a bike up Main Street?
I have. Two days ago.
Okay. We got a few?
Lots of us.
And how often do we do it?
Three times a week.
Good job. Uh, the point being is that how the, with, with, if we have more, uh, that's going on, with more community input with this, uh, I don't think that, like I said, I've been riding bikes in Butte for 40 years. I don't need bike lanes to get around town. And one of the things I've also gave to the Council of Commissioners about a year ago is, uh, uh, the paper here by Oswald, uh, Fred Oswald, and he's a bicycle instructor out of, uh, Seattle. And he had the one that was Bicycles, Blenders, and Smarter Solutions. I gave everybody a copy of this, and I don't know if anybody read it. And the other one was Training Wheels and stuff. Putting bike lanes on busy streets is not a badge of honor. In most cities, it is a problem, and this is why they go ahead and put the bike lanes. Right now in Butte, we do not have a big bicycle population, and I don't think we ever will because we're only 30,000 people. But why do you want to go ahead and invite novice, beginning, and amateur cyclists on busy streets? The worst drivers in the world all drive on the main streets. And so why, why, and so by putting the bike lanes on there, you cannot, you're just putting these people in danger. You can only ride up Main Street five miles an hour, and the street cars are going 25. And, and it's just something I think that really should be looked at when we're sitting here looking at the design of this. I don't believe that bike lanes should be allowed on Park Street. They could be very easily, uh, just a bike route on Galena Street and, and Broadway would be sufficient. And, and just in closing, I really believe that a lot of this money that is being spent on these big projects, and the other one I gave you was from, um, Mr. Ripica, who was an economics guy, and he talks about these big projects that are trying to entice the, uh, economics of Butte, uh, or in any city. Uh, this money could be used to fix the facades of our existing buildings in uptown Butte. And it just, I think it's a waste of money to be spending money on this stuff and like on, like a convention center on top of a parking garage that doesn't exist yet. Uh, we have so many beautiful gyms in uptown Butte, I believe that the facade should become first, and then we can ordinate them with beautiful signs, and that will start to bring the economics in uptown Butte. Thank you very much.
John? Further comment on any item that's on tonight's agenda?
I'm Elizabeth Fitzpatrick, and I live on Henry Street. And I'm opposed to this median built on Park Street. Park Street is too steep of a hill, slick, ice, snow. I've seen them close Park Street. Um, driving down Excel on my way to work, and I leave early because I've had so many near misses with the tech students going through the stop signs, and they flip you off. Park Street is another one. They race right through the lights. I've had near misses there. I can see, you know, the trees and stuff. A median on a steep hill of Park Street is not a good place to put it. Uh, taking away a lane is not good because, you know, you get these people that are going down the hill or trying to go up the hill, you're going to have a lot more accidents. Um, you're going to have people hurt. I, I'm all for some of the work, but the median and the trees in the middle of the street, it's just not worth it. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Ed?
Bandrod, 2601 Grand Avenue, Butte, Montana. I've got three subjects to comment. I'll make it, try and make it as quick as possible. Number one, presentation relative to the Woodstoves in Greeley. I want to remind the planning department or whoever that the north boundary of the Greeley Plan area is Farrell Street. Farrell Street has historic significance. We do not want to call it continental. I would also like to thank the Woodstove Project for working with the community, with the Greeley community. Number two, Judiciary Committee, Section 4 Resolution to put 8.7 million bond on the ballot. I believe that there is a wiser, holistic utilization for our limited community recreational capital than to dump it all into a 56-day aquatics facility. Now to talk about what I really came here for, but you know, like, is what I want to talk about. I'm not opposed to projects that improve Butte. I'm not opposed to projects that improve Butte, but I am opposed to the procedure. The one question I didn't hear tonight is what do we do when tech expands? We want to cut the streets capacities. Maybe they'll expand to the point where we need to widen them again. To me, this is a major policy issue. Any project that proposes spending 7 million of public monies, whether the funds come from the feds, the state, or local, is a major policy issue. What I do not see in Communication Number 1676 is a request for the Council Commissioners to abide by the Butte Silver Bowl City-County Charter and call for, authorize, and recognize the consensual advisory recommendation of Park Street Improvement Community Council.
Point of order. Commissioner Ralph?
I'm sorry, Mr. Ben.
I rise to point of order if there's no comment during comment period from the Commissioners.
But the comment must be on something on the agenda.
It is on the agenda. It's on the Park Street. I said it was on Section 3 Presentation Communication Number 1676, which is on the agenda.
You can continue, Mr. Ben.
Thank you. Mike Smith wrote in his article in Montana Standard Today that Commissioner Anderson said, "I hope the public is involved, involved in the decision-making process." I hope the public, they come out and hear the proposal, which they did. The lack of public input on a lot of projects is due to the lack of public showing up. Again, I and the 89% of the 469 people I've talked to on the streets so far, and that's over 95% confidence, ask, what is the use, Commissioner Anderson, to come to these meetings? To make comments when nobody listens? When this Council of Commissioners is not willing to authorize, empower any official community council's channel for public participation in their own government? When this Council of Commissioners continues to ignore the Butte Silver Bowl City-County Charter, what's the use? Show me. I've asked you before. Show me and the people where this Council of Commissioners has established any rules or procedures for calling for, authorizing, empowering, and/or recognizing the advice of a community council. Show me since 2006, when it was approved by the voters and the people, or you have authorized or empowered any community council to advise this Council of Commissioners? When Clause 3.03-E of the Butte City Board City-County Charter was approved by the voters, what is the use, Mr. Commissioner Anderson, to come before this Council of Commissioners without previously being empowered?
Mr. Ben, could you please wrap it up? We've heard this every time you come here, so I really appreciate.
Without previously being empowered to do so, when this Council of Commissioners intimidates, as you're trying to do now, and begin limited when legitimate requests come before this council, and ignores by note and filing without allowing the public to call community councils from this council?
I'm Scott Gray. Live at 25 East Granite. Lived uptown for a long time. Commissioner Shaw, council member. And I, as I said, I've been up here before, talked about bike riding. And I appreciate all the improvements that can make Butte look prettier, so that's all good. And it is expensive, and it takes a lot of thought going into it. So, my input would, it's going to be just a couple little things here that I can say from riding and what I've observed since the bike lane thing came out. Now, like I said, you know, it doesn't make much difference to me if I find a road that's a little too busy, whether it has bike lanes or not, I'll find another road. And that's kind of where it's come down to with Park Street. As an example, I ride up to tech, and I come back, and I notice it is a fast corridor. It's wide enough to accommodate the traffic. There was a, recently in the winter, I've been riding up, and you go on Granite Street, you get up by the college there, and they don't have it plowed, and the cars can't even make it up that way, so they have to use Park Street. I've had the bike, and I'm already halfway up the hill, and I've, instead of turning around, I just ended up walking up the hill. I ended up walking up faster on the back road than it takes for a car to get back up because of the ice and everything, and it go back up Park. I've come down Park Street. I've been, been on it in icy conditions, snowy, whatever, and I've been a pedestrian. I've noticed that it is kind of wide to cross. You're kind of looking both ways, and you see traffic, and obviously it is a real busy city, street. And I, so I kind of question the whole idea of putting more, too much stuff into that street to making it even narrower. The center corridor might be a good idea for the pedestrian, and I'm not sure that they might have to have more lighting at nighttime, that kind of thing. Because I can say as a bike rider, when I come down from tech, that's one street that I can trust that is fast enough as a bike rider, that I'm going to be able to get through town quick enough. It's not going to slow me down. I got, don't have to wait for cars that they want. They can go around me coming up Park Street. But if the street's going to get narrower, it's going to make it even tougher to use that street. And like some of these streets that have angle parking, I've already got, I have that issue where I've got to ride out in the middle of the street, and I see cars go, they hug the center line. They're not even in the middle of their lane. They're way, in fact, a lot of times they drive into the left-hand lane when they're on Granite Street to avoid the traffic on Granite at the Hennessy Market. I see it like every day, constantly. I mean, it's vehicles of all sizes. I see this all the time. You can see there, you only have to be, you can be a long ways away from that. You can see there, obviously, they're actually going into the other lane. They're going against traffic just to, just to make it safer with what's going on. And I've actually had that same situation on the bike door. I'm pretty much right down the center of the street in both directions. So, now on Park Street, I don't have that problem. I can go down the right-hand lane. I stay, pretty much stay out of the middle lane. Bike riders don't have much business being in the middle of the road, so if you're going to take a left-hand turn, you don't want to be out in the middle of the street anyways. You need to end up going through an intersection a different way. And by law, I've found that you can cross the intersection, you can actually ride your bike through the intersection any direction, which is different than where a car would have to get in this left-hand lane to take a left. You can actually, as long as it's, the green is light, walk. You can, I usually walk my bike a lot of times through intersections. I don't, I think it's kind of a funny law that, I've never seen it really be a problem. As long as you're looking around, you need to see the traffic. And a lot of times, a bike rider is going to see the traffic a lot before the cars anyways. And that's what I'm saying about these bike lanes. When you're in the blind spot, you're on the right-hand side of the road, you see the traffic. If you're in the road, you see them coming, you get out of the way, they drive by, then you get back into the middle of the road, then you're okay. And that's kind of how it is. And Park Street gives you plenty of room for that. But when, if the road's narrow, it's, it just gives you less where you've got cars. Sometimes the car's in front of you, and you're coming on a bike, and you're just trying to keep, and if they're going to stop, that slows you down, and then you just, oh, that wasn't a good experience. Now I've got to stop. I lost my momentum. I can't start on the hill, so you want to use that momentum. And so, you know, I understand that Park Street, it's a tough thing about this, this speed that people want to maybe speed through there, but I do see that it is a busy corridor that, it's the only one that's real trustworthy that you can get up to tech quickly as it is. And I think it would be a real limiting thing to have, if snow plows, it just, you know, maybe visibility for pedestrians, bikes, just different things like that. I mean, I kind of like the idea of that center corridor, but I'm not sure it would really help. Might look really nice, but I think it might, you know, interfere with, with traffic flow for certain reasons, especially like in the wintertime. And, you know, and I guess I got to reiterate on that, on these, on some of these roads, I end up using the busier streets in the wintertime. They're all plowed a lot better than, than these side streets. And of course, like Main Street, I can go down it fast enough, and I'm right down the middle of the road coming up. You can't go that fast. A lot of times, I just use the sidewalk and get off. So, the bike lane going north on Montana, you know, I mean, the only purpose that it serves to me, these charos and bike lanes, that it tells people that bikes have the right to be on the road. So, and there are plenty of signs that lets people know that.
Thank you, Scott. Really appreciate your comments, okay?
All right.
I know you're a bike rider. You've been here before, and I really appreciate that.
So, that's all I guess I had. Good one. Okay, thanks.
Thanks so much. Thank you. Any other comment that come before us this evening?
Hi, my name is Pam Haxby-Cody. I'm the Director of the Butte Local Development Corporation. I can't help myself. I have to end on a positive note up here. I don't profess to have all the expertise. In fact, I don't have any of the expertise with regard to the design of this project. But I can tell you that it's an opportunity that we have, one of many, to come in front of you and inform you and to inform the public and to get comment about what this can look like and what this can do for our community. It'll be a wonderful interest to Montana Tech and for our students. It's something that we deserve. It's something that's going to enhance the entire community because what happens in uptown Butte happens all over the place. I want to thank you. I want to thank the staff. As I said, I know this is just the start of the project. They haven't made up their minds. They're experts, and they're involving lots of other experts. Thank you very much. I see an opportunity for us, and thanks a lot. This is what democracy is all about. How lucky are we to live in a nation where we can have this kind of discord? Thanks.
Thank you, Pam. Any further comment? Any item on tonight's agenda?
I'd like to agree with, my name is Dave Jordan, 941 South Main Street. Council Commissioners, I'd like to agree with Pam Haxby-Cody. Any access and anything that would make a nicer thoroughfare going up to Montana Tech and integrate them in the community more, I'm all in favor of that. It's a big positive step forward for Butte. What I'm against is, in Phase 2, the pictures that were shown, this is obviously not Montana Street to tech, this is the middle of the uptown Butte with the divider down the middle of it. Anybody that spends any time in uptown Butte knows that there are trucks parked in uptown Butte all day long to come and they go, they park right in the middle of the street. It's the way things are. We put a center divider there, there's going to be no place for delivery trucks. The alleys in uptown Butte are too big for current trucks to use them. Back in the old days, my dad ran Butte Bozeman Delivery Service. They delivered in a pickup truck, ran up and down the alleys. Now, everybody's got to park a semi in the middle of Park Street. With the divider there, it's just not going to work. Secondly, I question what standards are used on determining these bicycle lanes. Montana Department of Transportation has built a really nice-looking system over in Annaconda. I drive it four times a day, or four times a week, right? They've got four lanes, they've got two lanes in each direction with charos. There's room for the cars to get around the bikes. The bikes are not locked into a pillar zone. Exactly what bike lanes themselves are. I question the standards we're using on determining these bike lanes. They're inherently dangerous. I'd like to compliment, we're doing a wonderful job that was done on Main Street that looks like hell. There are lanes that are going into each other. There are straight lanes that are running into the turn lanes down on Main and Second Street. The job that was done by the Montana Department of Transportation, if they were the ones in oversight, left us with a mess. They shot that paint green. It didn't have time to cure before the cold season, even though some people recommended that maybe we do this in the springtime when things would still be nice. We wouldn't have wasted $130,000 or $1,000 on paint.
My name is Rich Penn-Halligan. Live at 828 West Court Street. I didn't know we'd be able to make comments tonight, but I do have a couple comments to make. First of all, I wanted to say, since I'm here for the Woodstove thing, whoever's in charge of that, he seems like he's doing a fantastic job, and I'd like to commend that Woodstove program. It seems great, under budget. I don't want to get up here and say everything is bad because I don't think that. So, I think what they did on the Park, what I came here to speak about is the Park Street planning. I think what they, I think what they did mostly of all, they've done a really good job. But I'd like to say that I'm completely against turning it into two lanes from four All you have to do is ask yourself, one key question here is, Mr. Sorge came up with a good question about what they're going to do with snow. There is no answer yet. They've had this whole time to figure out this entire project, but they can't figure out how to do the snow without shutting down a lane? How is that an improvement for people getting back and forth to tech? I go up to tech every week. I deal with 20 to 40 different students up there every week. And aside from the Brazilian students who are here for just a year, who don't have cars, virtually every other student has a car up there. They virtually, most of them, if not 90-some percent, don't walk up and down that. They use cars. Here in Butte, I think we have to come to grips with the fact that our climate is what our climate is. I know, I don't want to go down Park Street and be stopped and rerouted to some other streets because it's shut down. Right now, they can get the snow out of there, and they can still keep the traffic going. I also want to say this, this next item, too, is that when you do your study for these, for Park Street, I think you should think about putting in there all the students that are going to be living at digger digs. That's another 230-odd students. Because, I don't know if anyone knows this, but from the zoning board meeting, which I had two days in advance to go to that, I appreciate that very much. They're going to put a right-hand turn sign there. So, you're not supposed to go down, what is that, Granite Street? You're not supposed to go down Granite Street. You're supposed to circle in to the Main Street that goes straight down through campus. That's their idea of keeping the people safe on Granite Street because Granite Street right there is dangerous for all that new traffic. That's why they decided to put a right-hand turn stop sign only for people coming out of digger digs, if anyone didn't know that or not. And what they said was that they'd come straight up through the campus. First of all, I don't think the students are going to do that anyway. No student's going to want to go through a sign that flashes 15 miles per hour going through Main Campus there. None of them like that. Probably what they'll do is they'll go down Steel, and so all the neighbors down at the lower west side are going to get most of that traffic, or they're just going to illegally go down another street. But since they said that that's where they were going to go, I think you should add that onto the traffic study for Park Street because that's what they decided where all that traffic was going to go. So, add that into that. They want to increase Montana Tech, and I think it's fantastic. Montana Tech is the saving grace of Butte as far as I'm concerned. Students that I see come out of there after seniors are the best, and I hope we can do everything we can to help Montana Tech. But I don't believe that taking a town to two lanes from four is going to help anything. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rich.
Hello, my name is Shane Martin. Live at 1012 West Platinum Street. Madam Chairman, Councilpeople, I guess I just want to speak as a proponent of this project. I bike, walk, run in that area. My 65-year-old mother, while I'm at work, watches my son and takes him for walks up in that area. It's pretty familiar with it. I think the design they went with was pretty good. It's actually, I participated in the, when they had the Internet study, and it's kind of a lot of stuff that I thought was a good idea in there. The four lanes to two lanes, I think if you keep it at four lanes, you're really not going to change anything. We've, look at the planning document from 2005. I just looked at it last night. It talked about how that stretch of road is underutilized. We had folks here, traffic engineers over the last year, I don't remember the gentleman's name, talk about how much that was underutilized, that stretch of road. And he talked a lot about how when roads are that wide, especially that road that's built to the specs of a highway, that people will just naturally drive faster. So, if you think people are going to slow down the 25 on a four-lane road, it's not going to happen. They're going to continue to do 35 through there. So, it's going to make it really difficult to cross those roads as a pedestrian. When it comes to the Excelsior stuff, I would say, in a lot of ways, I'm almost saying, hold off on it because the road's in bad enough shape that it keeps the traffic slowing there that I can cross that safely, so. Otherwise, I'm for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Shane. Any other comment from the audience for this evening? Any other comment from the audience for this evening?
Good evening, uh, I'm Rick Guinness, and I got the opportunity to grow up in Butte off 901 West Silver. I remember when Tech was only four or five hundred students, they project ten times that much. I believe in Tech, my dad was there, I got relatives, went to school there, sisters, I disagree with the putting Park Street down to a two-lane, and then Boulder Montana isn't Butte, Montana, neither is Portland, Oregon. Butte people have their own, uh, mojo to live up with. I believe that somehow, when you look at the urban revitalization projects that go on, I had an opportunity to be a farmer in the Helena Valley after I got out of the service, uh, two years with Lewis and Clark Planning Board. I, uh, had a subdivision up there, most of my process was with the water, the zoning, things that you look forward to in your long-term plans. Um, it took seven years of, uh, finally got it okay, but you gotta go through the process, and I believe when we look at Montana Tech, it's located on the very edge of our urban footprint, if you will. We do need bike traffic, I remember as a kid, just burning the brakes off my bike because of these hills, but, uh, it is dangerous when we mix it with traffic. What we need to do, though, is look at Tech on the edge, there are people from Dillon, Anaconda, Helena, Whitehall, the surrounding area, Deer Lodge, and then the folks that moved into here now, and it's at three thousand or so, I noticed that all the duplexes on the west side, even in fact, house values are falling due to the fact, like in any duplex, there could be three students on each side, which brings in six vehicles, if you will, plus probably three or four bikes. I think we've gotta find a way, because of the way the traffic comes up in Two Tech on the edge, is we need access somehow to Iron Street, if you will, off the periphery, maybe to get a, a relief valve, cause it's all gotta come up to that park and Excel intersection, pretty much, no matter where you're at. But, again, I just love Butte, I think we can solve this, but it's, uh, you know, we, I think our kids should also learn how to swim, uh, so they don't drown. But, uh, and then the federal, the state, and the local funding, we need to get a handle on what those funds are, what they're appropriate to use on, and, you know, make the plans, like John was talking about, the one-year, five-year, what have you, but find a way to get them down to Iron Street. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Any other questions? Any item on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, all right. Thank you all for your comments, we appreciate the public input, always. Okay, moving to Section Four, Communication Number Fifteen dash four-nine-zero. Karen Burns, Director of Butte Silver Bow Community Development Department, requesting council's recommendation to approve Council Communication Fifteen dash four-six-zero, request from Blaine Brown to purchase city-county property under the adjacent landowner policy. I talked to Lori Casey today about all four, three or four items that are on tonight's agenda with the land sales, and this one, we are, we're just about done with the study, there was just some details that are being worked out, and we should get a communication from, uh, the, Lori Casey is our interim land director, she'd be getting something from her as a recommendation, so we'll hold that in, in, uh, advance. Section Five, Communication Number Sixteen-ten. Patsy Coats, Property Specialist, Butte Silver Bow Land Records, requesting council approve the tax deed sale public auction to be held on February seventeenth, 2016, and ask the county attorney to prepare council resolution for approving the sale of certain parcels of the tax-dated real properties owned by Butte Silver Bow. We did have that resolution, it was approved, uh, in our last council meeting, so Commissioner Walker?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, uh, I'd like to make a motion to cross reference, excuse me, cross-reference Communication Sixteen dash ten with Resolution Sixteen dash seven, place on file.
We have a motion and a second to cross-reference Communication Sixteen dash ten with Resolution Sixteen dash seven, is there anything on the question? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Section Six, Communication Number Sixteen dash twenty-seven. Craig T. Williams of eight oh three North Main, Butte, Montana, requesting council's authorization to purchase county-owned property under the adjacent landowner policy. This is still, uh, being processed through the Land Sales Committee, and we will continue to hold that in advance. Section Seven, Communication Number Sixteen dash thirty-two. Cindy Shaw, Butte Silver Bow Commissioner, District Number Eleven, requesting, uh, council start the process of selecting an arim treasurer for the city-county of Butte Silver Bow, Montana. Commissioner Walker, I believe will wanna place that on file, since we did.
Sixteen thirty-two, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to place Communication Sixteen dash three-two on file.
We have a motion and a second to place Communication Sixteen dash thirty-two on file, is there anything on the question? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Section Eight, Communication Sixteen dash five-one. Lori Casey, Assistant Planning Director, Butte Silver Bow Planning Board, requesting council of commissioners to conduct a public hearing on February twenty-fourth, 2016, on proposed changes to the urban area growth policy map. Commissioner Walker?
Thank you, with that hearing being held tonight, I'd like to make a motion to place Communication Sixteen dash five-one on file.
We have a motion and a second to place Communication Sixteen dash five-one on file, is there anything on the question? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Section Nine, Communication Number Sixteen dash five-two. Y Wen Ton and Y Gong Ton, sixteen twenty-seven Shore Drive, San Jose, California, requesting council of commissioners to approve purchase of property at four-one-seven North Main Street, Butte, Montana. Lori Casey told me today that, uh, she is, uh, in contact with, uh, the Tons and is asking them to donate the land to the county, simply because it's completely surrounded by county property, and they're in those discussions right now. So, we will continue to hold that in advance until we get further direction from Lori. Section Ten, Communication Sixteen dash six-three. Did you have a question, Cheryl?
I'm sorry, I thought they wanted to buy the property, is that an adjacent?
It, it's actually in the center, it's completely surrounded by county property, and so Lori had a discussion with them, and they're discussing whether or not they should just donate us the land, it's not, they can't use it in any way, it's just a very small piece that is sitting in the middle of county property. Okay. Section Ten, Communication Sixteen dash six-three. Dinette El Gleason, Director of Butte Silver Bow Finance and Budget Department, requesting the council commissioners authorize a presentation on March second, 2016, on the audit conducted on the fiscal year 2015 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, CAFR, and the federal schedule awards, and we will await, uh, that, um, presentation next week, on March second. Section Eleven, Communication Sixteen dash six-four. Norman Daniel of Landscapes of Montana, two thousand and one Porter Avenue, Butte, Montana, requesting council of commissioners consider approval of a land variance to erect a minehead frame on Butte Silver Bow ant, land, owned land on North Main Street between the B A and P Walking Trail and Clear Grip Terrace on March second, 2016, and we will have that to be read and acted upon next week. Commissioner Palmer will be assisting Mr. Daniel to discuss that matter, so. Hold that in advance, a lot of, a lot of detail in that one. Section Twelve, Communication Number Sixteen dash six-five. Julie Connors, Butte Silver Bow Finance and Budget Department Accountant, requesting council of commissioners schedule a public hearing for March second, 2016, for the purpose of amending the fiscal year 2015-16 budget to allow for increased expenditures of unanticipated revenue. And we will have that public hearing next week, I will hold this in advance. Section Thirteen, Communication Sixteen dash sixty-six. James M. Manning, Chairman, Greenway Service District, requesting council of commissioners schedule a bid opening for the Silver Bow Creek Trailhead Construction on March second, 2016. We will have that bid opening on March second, and we'll hold this in advance. Section Fourteen, Communication Sixteen dash six-eight. Lori Casey, Assistant Planning Director, uh, Butte Silver Bow Planning Board, requesting council of commissioners authority to hold two bid openings on March second, 2016, regarding the Community Transportation Enhancement Program, we will hold those bid openings also next week, hold this in advance. Section Fifteen, Communication Number Sixteen dash six-nine. Patsy Coats, Property Specialist, Butte Silver Bow Land Records, requesting council of commissioners concur with the request to hold a bid opening on March sixteenth, 2016, regarding the title and lien search of the 2016 tax deed process, we'll hold that until March sixteenth. Section Sixteen, Communication Sixteen dash seventy. Patsy Coats, Property Specialist, Butte Silver Bow Land Records, requesting council of commissioners to concur with the request of the county attorney's office to issue a resolution for mailing a notice that a tax deed may be issued to the county, end quote, "to all property owners and interested parties on the delinquent real property taxes for year 2012." We will hold that in advance, I assume that the county attorney's office will be drafting a resolution, we'll hold it until that time. Section Seventeen, Communication Sixteen dash seven-two. Stephen Burns, Wood Stove Coordinator, Butte Silver Bow Environmental Health Department, requesting time on council commissioners' February twenty-fourth, 2016, meeting to update the council on the progress of the wood stove changeout program. I'm, I'm sorry that Stephen didn't stick around to hear about all the nice things that people had to say about it, uh, and so I would defer to Commissioner Walker to place this on file.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman, uh, with that presentation being held tonight, I will make a motion to place Communication Number Sixteen dash seven-two on file.
We have a motion and a second to place Communication Sixteen dash seventy-two on file, anything on the question? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Section Eighteen, Communication Sixteen dash seven-six. David Schultz, Director of Butte Silver Bow Public Works Department, requesting time on the February twenty-fourth agenda for the council of commissioners to update Park Street, Excelsior Avenue, and Uptown ADA improvements. Commissioner Walker?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, uh, with that, uh, presentation being held tonight, I'll make a motion to place Communication Number Sixteen dash seven-six on file.
We have a motion and a second to place Communication Sixteen dash seven-six on file, is there anything on the question? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I would offer an opportunity for any public comment on any public matter not on tonight's agenda, if there's any comment, please come forward. Seeing none, um, I had asked the council members to let me know if anybody else was interested in joining the, um, consent decree negotiations table, and I had heard of anyone other than a couple that said they had a couple questions about it, which I was hopefully gonna be able to answer, if not, Mr. Sessa was willing to do so, but I think Dave Palmer, he asked to do that, and I think that we'll just go ahead and have him get involved in that for, on our behalf, and I think that's a good addition to that group, so. Uh, anything further to come before us this evening? Commissioner Fisher?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, I'd just like to let the council know that you answered my email, and, uh, I believe Matt told us that we'd be two commissioners sit at the table of that final decree, and then, I don't know what happened, but now there's only gonna be one commissioner sit at that table, and I don't know how that decision came about or what happened, but that is the final decision, according to Chairman Shaw, and, uh, I started to inform everyone about that, thank you.
And what happened was, I talked to Mr. Sessa, and he said that that, Mr. Vincent was incorrect about that, that there was only one opening, and that was, uh, put out there by the entire group that was arranging the, these meetings, and we didn't have a choice, so, that's, that's what I was told by Mr. Sessa. Anything else to come before us? And we're all a little bleary-eyed, so, Commissioner Walker?
Yes, uh, thanks, Madam Chairman, we decided next month is five?
Yes, and, and if you look at our calendars, the last, the last Wednesday of the month, right after Easter, we will not be meeting. Thank you for reminding me on that. Anything else? Okay. Commissioner Walker, would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thank you, everyone.